Next they ask you, are we live? Now we're live. All right, tonight's committee, the whole meeting Monday, February third, two thousand twenty-five. Like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with official notification roll call, please.
Sir Schuber McComb.
Here.
Ed Gallagher.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Or Gavsky.
Here.
Or Taylor.
Here.
Other than Steve Olson.
Here.
Schumacher here.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public con- comment signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting next Monday, February ten, two thousand twenty-five. First up, are there any speakers this evening, Ann? Next is our report from our superintendent.
I have one informational item, and that will be occurring at our regular board meeting next week with Principal Parrott. So get an update. You'll notice also on the transportation agenda that Pat will be giving an update on his department next week as well. So. It'll be coming then.
Thank you. Next is our committee reports, Operations Committee. Sarah.
No action items, no discussion item, and then just that informational item that Pat will be here the next meeting, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, a department update.
Thank you, Budget Insurance, Mr. Nick Olson.
Our first action item is gifts, grants, and requests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and requests received in January twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you. Appreciate it. Can I ask how much money we've raised for Superior Days?
Um, he was not here. I want to say it's just over five thousand.
That is what I recall.
Yeah, he had mentioned that he wanted to cover all transportation, and he had done so thus.
And so we are putting together kind of an article that will highlight the people who have helped to support it, so we can recognize who has contributed to that.
Okay, no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Discussion items, second Friday, January twenty twenty-five. Pupil counts.
Sorry, high schools.
Uh-uh.
Um, so this is the, so there's two different Friday counts we have. The first Friday count, that's the main one. That's a big one that defines what we have for our enrollment. Then DPI does their numbers spinning around, and they come back and say this is for your FTE for the interim free round. Then there's a second Friday count. This does a lot more for aids, equalization aid, and things like that, the advantages between. It's a good tracker to see how we're doing as far as on losing kids. We consistently lose kids as we go through half the year. In this one, we lost about thirty-nine kids. It's the number we lost.
Ann, can you make that a little bit bigger?
Yes.
So I actually worked with Casey Steph because it's one thing for me to just say we lost thirty-nine kids, but where the kids live. Um, so where the difference comes in preschool, preschool spend, we gained five kids. In four K, we gained four kids. And then in kindergarten, we lost one kid. He just, it was actually one of the kids moved kindergarten back down to four K because they were very forgetful. And then grades one through twelve, we lost forty-seven kids. Of those, the ones that left, we had four kids that graduated, eleven kids that went to private or homeschool. I think part of that big number is there was a school that closed right before who closed, I can't remember who it was. They moved, they closed right before, so I think some of the kids came over here and that some of the kids are.
They were gonna close, and then they didn't, but we did gain some kids from there, Lakeview Christian Academy.
Oh, yeah. We had seventeen kids that moved out of state. Um, we had nine kids that went to online school, and then another sixteen kids that moved to another Wisconsin district. And then for kids we brought in, we brought in five kids that were private or homeschool into the schools. We had twenty-three kids that were out of state, moved into our district. And then we had two that went from online school back into our school. And then eight that went from a different district in Wisconsin and moved into our district. So that's where the numbers come in and out. When Casey wrote it down by what schools are gaining and losing. So it's, you know, the middle school, the high school, we lost ten there in both of those. So it's, it's on track. Unfortunately, it's still not the lead picture we began in our month. It's continually fault. Um, we're doing this thing again this year, moving to kids that haven't enrolled. You know, why did you all didn't enroll? Is there anything we do? We did it last year. It gave some data, but a lot of people were asleep. Uh, people just being, uh, right, so. Um, we reach out to those that wanted to be contacted again if they were national public responses. Um, so I think it's, it's just the number is setting change, and that's why we rolled out Superior Days. It's just to sit on it well because it's not out. Training right now, but probably isn't flat down until twenty thirty-one. Even then, it's just flat.
Thank you for the breakdown. Tell Casey thank you as well. I think that's super helpful, and and I think it's important that we do continue to reach out to families and see where they're at, and if we can recoup their kids, that would be awesome, so.
Thanks, David. Informational items, content, revenue, and expenditure, preliminary reports. Get your own here.
Oh, we got the big revenue tax check came in, so it's been cash. We're continuing to reach out. And then just the expenditures, it's just tracking. What I'm seeing more is, uh, so whenever, the whole process is when somebody wants to buy something, they have to enter the PO, PO numbers, go by the principal, the PO that comes to me and get it approved, seeing the budgets getting beaten up and right on schedule. Because we shouldn't be buying that many class supplies right now. We should have already bought the class supplies. It was a boost on scheduling, and then just keeping an eye on the ones where they probably don't, they just have all red, and there's no green in there to show that they have some money up over it and evaluated some of their principals. I did a quick investigation on the departments and seeing what we are. Saying all right, we said buying is the same heavy hitters. The big one that always throws me is the WIAE officials are expensive, but you have to pay, have to pay for officials. So that number is a big issue for you on how that's we'll watch you the configuration of your school every single year, so.
Thanks, Steve. You talk to anybody about that?
Uh, they pay less than what I get at other schools.
We go. Any other questions for David, anybody? Thank you, David. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Legislative Committee, Laura.
It's sad because it always messes with me. I'm sorry, I'm like, uh, okay. Um, yeah, so no action items, no discussion items. There's just one informational item, which is legislative priorities. Um, the Governor Evers did release his budget for two thousand twenty-five, the biannual budget, and he says, quote, "He would propose historic investments in K-12 education and meaningful investments in early childhood education." So he's asking lawmakers to release fifty million dollars to support literacy efforts in the classrooms. We know Act Twenty was a unfunded mandate, so that's one of the requests he has. He's talking about um, similar in Minnesota, access to free lunches, and so budgeting for healthy food for our children, also making investments in mental health. Um, sorry, the investment for the Healthy Meals, Healthy Kids Initiative is a hundred and fifty-four point eight million dollars, um, and then thirty million for school-based mental health services. Um, I know the special education reimbursement is something, um, Brooke was our delegate at the conference that we went to a few weeks ago now. Um, and that was one of the things that had passed as far as our request. Um, of course, we wish it was higher, but that is something that WASB will be hopefully moving forward as well as the um, Blue Ribbon Joint Commission on Finance, um, all of their recommendations that they also made, investments and requests for investments in public education. Was there supposed to be something else?
Yeah, just so you know, we put together this flyer. It's on our, it'll be on our website tomorrow. Um, Casey was out today, but this is a two-page flyer, one with information on one side, and then the other side, our legislative priorities. So can you scroll up, Ann? Keep going, keep going, keep going. So we've outlined the four different areas for the budget that we're requesting. Can you go all the way to the bottom?
Yep.
On the bottom, it talks, you can't read it from here probably, but I just wanted to reiterate, this is the platform that we are working with SAA, which works with the business managers, principals, special ed directors, and superintendents to put together a common legislative platform. So we're all kind of saying the same thing. So this is consistent with what they're going to be hearing from other districts too, so we're so, um, we shared this with Romaine Quinn when he was here last Monday as well, so he has a copy of this as well.
One other legislative budget thing was also investments in school safety.
Oh, good.
Um, so that's another thing that I'm hopeful, just given what happened in Wisconsin.
We continue to utilize the Department of DOJ pretty significantly at the Speak Up, Speak Out app. We utilize heavily.
Yep.
So those are very important investments. We use it for training.
Um, and then, of course, our students will be going down for Superior Days, myself and David and a few other district staff to use this messaging. Um, because we've engaged, and I know, Amy, you've engaged our representatives here, but the purpose of Superior Days for forty years is to bring some issues impacting Superior to the Capitol, because often all those representatives are not coming to Superior to hear from us. Um, so we go down to them, and I'm just really excited to watch the youth do their, their work. Seems like they're prepared.
And, um, I was gonna say one other thing, and I lost my train of thought.
But it's hopeful that they're able to meet with more than just the
Right.
Democratic legislators on the joint and education committees.
That's what I was gonna say. When we met with Romaine Quinn last week, he did ask if we were interested in holding a joint finance committee listening session in Superior, and we said yes, so it'll be another app.
I don't think that's ever happened, has it?
Oh, but I will continue to ask, so. So you go. Yeah.
So hopefully, um, good things on the horizon, even small wins for public education. We shall see.
We have them with the kids again today. I wrote a script, so hey, hey, this is kind of an idea, and they repeat their script.
That's awesome.
They're gonna be listened to, and yeah, it's, it's great because each of the groups, there's students from Northwestern, there's students from Bayfield, also that partake in um, this work, so that was pretty neat.
That's it.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel negotiations, Brooke.
I have one action item. Administration recommends renewal of the administrator contracts.
Motion to approve.
Molly, do you just want to give the context for why this is on the board agenda?
Yep, so legally, we just have to have a couple of administrator renewals. So we put them on here every year at this time for, as a consent agenda for approval of them.
Any discussion, further discussion?
I think just, um, the recognition that we by law can allow administrators up to a two-year contract, so we're looking at potentially having two different options available, one-year or two-year contract.
Right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items, so that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Well, thanks, Brooke. Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Schumacher.
No action or discussion items. Informational items, there's still hints. New teacher support.
Hey, Betty. Um, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about something we'll see coming up later this spring when Molly brings forward changes for the teacher handbook for next year. Um, as you probably know, we, I think I've probably mentioned it before, we have a team for new teachers in our district. It's teacher representatives and myself, who every year do the planning for all the support that the new teachers need, assign the mentors for the new teachers, check in with the mentors, all that stuff. Um, a couple of years ago, we took a self-assessment from DPI and the New Teacher Mentoring Center. Um, and one of the things that it kind of showed us that we could do some growth in is moving from just a one-year support model for our new teachers to more of a two- or a three-year model. So, um, we are ready to launch that. Um, having mentors beyond one year, pass additional money, how, you know, providing professional development after school time, all that stuff. Um, you know, creates extra work and funds needed, so we tried to be as strategic as we possibly could to make it a not increase the new teacher support budget. So what we are going to do is move from teacher, new teachers having a mentor their, just their first year to having a teacher mentor a colleague like they already have that first year, but then in their second and their third years, they will continue a mentorship relationship, but it will be with one of the instructional coaches in our district who all of our new teachers choose to work with in some capacity anyway, so helping them with classroom management, sometimes it's helping them with, you know, curriculum planning, meeting with their PLC, et cetera. Teacher, new teachers can always pick what they want to work on. Um, so we're gonna move to a three-year model. At the same time, we were working on this, as Dina's come on board in our district, um, she's been noticing that our new special ed teachers need some additional support too, so to kind of go along with that three-year plan now, Dina also has worked on a three-year, what would you call it, like a checklist or a learning list for our new sped staff, because there are so many new things that they need to learn, procedures, protocols, all of those things during their first three years, instead of trying to pack all of that just in their first year, so. Um, the reason that I'm sharing this with you is in our teacher handbook, in the, I think it's like a little professional development section, it specifically talks about how we provide teachers with a mentor their first year with us. And I'd like to change the language so it accurately represents what we're going to be doing and providing them with a mentor their first three years, the first year with a teacher colleague, and then the years two and three, the instructional coaches will be their mentors. So, um, I did share this with SFT at our Labor Management meeting last month to see if they had any questions, and they seem to have a positive response about more support for new teachers is always a good thing. Yeah, we can always use additional strategies to help retain our new teachers and help them feel supported, so. So that's a little background for when that comes forward on the handbook changes, and I think it's April, when Molly will bring those. Do you have any questions?
I think that's wonderful. I can't remember the statistic, but it's either three or five years is kind of the retaining that, that the teachers in that time span is so crucial, and so I think providing that extra support will be another thing that we can do to ensure that, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Your Honor. Up next, Kate, Task Director, improvement and assessment, talking about AGR. She's gonna tell us what AGR means. Year update, twenty-five, thirty strategic plan update.
All right, AGR.
Growth report.
Yes.
Yeah.
Achievement gap reduction. AGR.
We're growing on the other end.
Yes, correct. Um, so by statute, we need to give you an update twice a year, so this is the first update. AGR is a funding source from our state. It replaced what was known as Sage a long time ago, small class size uh, guarantee was Sage was really implemented at the elementary level, grades K one, two, three, to reduce class size numbers a long time ago. Uh, that evolved into what is now AGR, so achievement gap reduction. Within AGR, the principals do a lot of work to identify uh, strategies that they're going to implement. The DPI gives us a few strategies to pick from, uh, and we use strategies within our EMLSS model to support kids and to look for, look at data and watch data grow throughout the year. So the point of the reporting requirement is me, one, sharing with you kind of our baseline information, and we already do that in a number of ways. Uh, what is, and I, I feel like a broken record because I've said this a lot recently. What's difficult this year is that we started the year with an assessment, and now we have a new assessment with Ames Web because of Act Twenty. So we're doing a lot of, we're trying to compare the best we can, but in the world of assessment, like two assessments aren't identical, so when you just say, well, we had this many kids at risk in the fall, and now we have this many, but it's different measure, it's a little difficult. Uh, we're doing the best we can, so we are reporting, so we need to report out by building, by grade level, two times a year. And the principals do that by submitting a template to the DPI in the spring and a number of other reports then, and David has some components of those reports too. I think what's important, just so you're aware, obviously, I always present to you our assessment data at the state level, Forward Exam, ACT, Pre-ACT. In addition, these assessments, we will be utilizing FastBridge data from fall and Ames Web data from winter and spring. Um, the measures we're using in kindergarten are letters and letter sounds, and those will track three times a year because a lot of those assessments also change as kids, the progression of what we use for assessments changes a lot at K one, so those, those two will remain steady. Um, in first grade, we use decodable words, and then also add in a reading fluency, which is a one-time, one-minute timed reading assessment that we use throughout. Then in second and third grades, we're going to continue to use our FastBridge measure of A reading, which is a comprehension assessment. Ames Web doesn't have any comprehension assessments that we use as part of Act Twenty, so the teachers felt strongly about continuing to use. AGR also includes a math component, uh, so on the math side in kindergarten, we look at number identification. In first grade, we look at place value and decomposing numbers. And in second and third grade, we use that A math assessment, so kind of a comprehensive look at math. So I track that data for the principals, um, and then they update those reports from our baseline to winter to spring. So we just finished last week our assessment window for both FastBridge and Ames Web. Um, I will, didn't, didn't say I was giving the Act Twenty update, but it kind of merges together. Our staff did an amazing job. It was stressful the first time through. Um, we're already rolling with our diagnostic assessments uh, in our timeline. Um, we're notifying parents, we're working on reading plans, so all of that is processing. Uh, teachers and staff are doing amazing. Principals are working really hard. Um, I'll be at all the buildings, helping support. We've started in some and working through next week, writing reading plans, and then we'll be communicating those with families. So the process is working. People are being really conscientious, and I super appreciate that because it's a lot of new things and dates and times, and people want to do the right thing, and I think that's admirable. So that's my AGR piece. Questions? Wonderings on that?
Because it was, it had to be in place by this month, right?
Correct, yep, and they set a job for us. They give you a large window. They started the window in December, but January thirty-first was the end, like, end date of the window, so Friday was it. Um, and I think our, our assessment rate was well over ninety, probably six percent, ninety-seven percent. We have some mature kids that weren't able to test. But otherwise, we were able to get to everybody, so.
Wonderful. Were easy to use, or?
User friendly.
It's, they just have enough, it, it's like, you know how.
Windows ninety-five?
Yeah. If you work on any programs where you have to filter, like I'm gonna pick a grade level and a test, every window in Ames Web, when you pick a new filter, you have to hit a button that says view refresh every single time. So you do a thing, and then you wait, and you're like, oh, I gotta, it's just, it's clunky.
Correct.
Yeah, it is not. I think we're very lucky to have EdgeClimber. I don't think I might have, I made some other choices if I didn't have EdgeClimber, because it's really where we're housing all of our data. It's all coming in there from Ames Web, so we're really not trying to stay out of the other program as much as I can and just direct people to EdgeClimber because I'm uploading everything there, and we're using that to build the plans, keep notes, so.
Thank you.
Your strategic plan.
Strategic plan, I have.
Oh, good, bring them.
Yeah.
Over and through.
They're very nice, Nick. You're gonna be very impressed. They're nice.
Is that me?
That's you.
Thank you.
You're proud. Mine?
Check it.
You got one too. I have. They're beautiful.
They're nice.
A moment for a book walk through. Um, so hot off the press like a couple days ago, um, just for the audience, uh, these will be shared shortly, um, but basically uh, our new mission, vision, and our pillars. Uh, I think that, and then the commitments are on the backside. I think the the point of not only sharing that with you today is kind of to give you an update on the, the next steps, because obviously we're not done. Um, we have way more work to do, and so right now, the work that's happening um, is the creation of the Continuous Performance Report. So we've taken, uh, with Joe Schrader, our consultant, we've taken our pillars, and now we're designing one-year action steps under the pillars, which kind of live in this Continuous Performance Plan Report Card, and from those action steps, the next step is to create the scorecard and pick out the metrics that we're gonna measure. So we said we were gonna do this. What metrics are gonna show us if that is as a district, if we're moving the needle on those products? So those are the next two steps. Uh, kind of big picture, we have a workday with principals in May to kind of work through the process that we've gone through with them. Some of them are under group, but not all of them. Because I think the work, uh, as we continue is is using this work to then redefine and reimagine and create new continuous improvement plans based on our new strategic plan period out then in August, so principals can roll that out with staff, like to own it and and, and feel the work that's happened, even though everyone wasn't present like the hour.
I think there's kind of two things that have to happen this spring still. One is we've got to figure out that dashboard piece and the metrics that we're gonna use to bring back to the board. But then the other piece in working with the principals is, um, how do we make this a living, breathing plan that we bring back to staff in the fall, and I think having them leave this work in their buildings will be more meaningful than me saying something at a welcome back. Plus, I've got to come up with something better than Spartan Olympics next year anyway, and I don't think rolling this out. So, um, so anyway, uh, we've got to kind of figure those two big things out this spring. I do want to acknowledge the fact that Kate is trying to figure this out while she's trying to figure out Act Twenty, as well as the spring assessment season coming up, so thank you, Kate. I know there's a lot on your plate. Um, so we've got those dashboard conversations coming up here in weeks ahead.
Kate deserves a round of applause.
I will say, as Dave is kind of this looking for feedback today on the copy machines, and we're in the midst of, we have to print like a manual for every test proctor for the Forward Exam and ACT, so we're like living in the copy room. Did I win the response rate like when I first?
No doubt that you would.
Let me tell you what we need, fast copy machine.
I came out of a listening session, I think it was at Cooper, and I said, we will follow up with the principals and get some feedback. He's like, I didn't, you didn't specifically say directors, and I'm gonna tell you what I think. I can't even have feedback.
Copy machines take it faster, so.
Uh, but I know you guys should be really proud. I mean, this is a really cool document, and you guys did a lot of nice work, so.
It, it came together a really nice way. I think the pictures really speak to the kids on the staff in their district. It's pretty.
And it's on your website. Is this going to be distributed anywhere? Well, we're trying to figure out how, we're actually, like Casey's working on some signs, some nice visual signs that we can put up, like for open houses, not open houses, like a welcome back weeks or board meetings, things like that. We got to figure out how we're gonna use this visually. It's all on the website now, so that is on there.
Um, I thought we used to have something in here to help center the board, just as we.
You said, um, tent, table tents on here.
What it was.
Kind of, I think one side was our vision, and one side was like our norms as a boss.
Maybe the graphic Casey's making might, would that be something maybe we could put in here?
Yeah. Yeah. It's like, like a sign.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we kind of had talked about, we were looking at some of the banners that are movable, just because you could roll it up and take it somewhere and, and kind of have it as a backdrop here when we're meeting and also at building, so we're looking at.
The other thing that, uh, David Coy is doing is he's trying to figure out how to make this into a poster. Uh, and then working with each building principal, because I think mission and vision needs to be front and center as, as we come into our schools too. So that could be somewhere in here potentially.
And if you haven't looked at the strategic plan kind of website page, uh, there are a lot of updates on there and this has kind of all been brought to light with, um, that, and we continue to work on that too. So the continuous improvement plan, I think we have a really good system. I think we're going to focus on a few, we're going to be a little more focused next year around our pillars specifically. Um, as we design, kind of design the template for, to work the team through that in August. So I think that'll be a really nice connection, kind of as a first step for people as we look at our metrics and good work. So thank you. I think you all being a part of that work was really important and I appreciate that and I continue to appreciate.
So check in with the board, is that like quarterly or is that twice a year or?
We haven't decided yet. That's part of our, that's what Joe needs help with.
I think one of the things that will be, Joe will give us some guidance there. I think one of the pieces, I think it kind of depends on the metric. Like maybe I give you an update, you know, some metrics are annual and some metrics are more frequent, like attendance or things like that. So I think kind of depending on the metrics that land on the scorecard, it may, might be.
May set up.
Quarterly or. Bye.
Makes sense. So for all of us that were at the, uh, strategic planning, power clap, one, two, three. Good job.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Thank you, Kate. You're a gem, Jane. All right. Jennifer Willoughby, Director, Really Childhood and Family Education, 4K Enrollment and Summer School Update.
Oh, everyone. 4K enrollment starts tomorrow for our district. Our website's been updated, information, information's been pushed out to families. Uh, we've had lots of phone calls in our office between this and summer school in the past few weeks. Um, so yeah, tomorrow morning, everything opens up. The YMCA is offering wrap care again, um, at Cooper. Um, we also have been busing room for about five kids to go to the YMCA. So we've been providing transportation from Northern Lights to the YMCA this year. We'll continue that next year as well. And then obviously the YMCA Cathedral, they all offer their own wrap care right at their location. Um, and then we'll be continuing to partner with Head Start as well. So we don't anticipate any changes in our locations from this year to next year, so. Um, summer school. Summer school for pre-K through twelve, um, we have started to push out information on our website as well for that. Again, we've been getting a lot of phone calls. January tends to be the time people start looking six months ahead of time. What am I going to do with my kids for the summer? Um, so we, our website's up and running. We're continuously adding information to that as, as things get planned. We'll be along with that. We're planning to, um, have elementary, uh, summer school at Cooper and Great Lakes this year. Uh, we talked as an admin team, um, just about rotating the schools a little bit so that we can, um, help support our building grounds, staff, um, including the buildings and having some additional time throughout the summer of schools that, um, it's not at. And, um, and then also there's a, a benefit, I think, to having, um, kids attend, be able to attend their homeschool. So even if that's every other year, uh, we'll look at that. So this coming year, um, it'll be at Cooper and Great Lakes. Um, Cooper will be, uh, students who will attend Cooper are from Four Corners, Bryant and Cooper. Students who will attend Great Lakes, Northern Lights and Great Lakes students. Um, the YMCA is going to continue to offer wrap care for summer school as well. Wrap care will be hosted at Great Lakes this year. And we'll also continue to partner with the YMCA for Camp Tall Pines. Uh, that flyer is on the website as well. We're ready to push that out. Um, they start enrollment this week, I think. Um, and, uh, that pickup and drop off for Camp Tall Pines will be at Northern Lights. So last year they were foot flopped. They're just going to continue to foot flop. Um, and then we'll have middle school classes as well as Spartan Athletic Development. Um, and, uh, those will be available for middle school through high school age kids.
Are there any language courses offered in the summer?
No language courses this year. We used to have the Spanish.
Yeah.
License staff has been, because you, we won't get, we don't get summer school reimbursement unless we have people licensed in that area. So that was a challenge we had.
Yeah. Shoot.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Reminder that the regular school board meeting will be next Monday, February 10th. We will be in closed session beginning at four-thirty and anticipate to be back in regular session by five-thirty. Thank you, directors. Uh, it makes a long day for you. We really appreciate you staying and, and being with us. At this time, I shall adjourn this meeting. Thank you for being here.